Good evening, and thanks for joining us today. The Planning Commission meeting of October 16, 2024. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcasted live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/meglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city's website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/Agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real-time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaleca.gov. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Trockian?
Here.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Minassian?
Here.
And Chairperson Shabazian?
Here. Can we have the reports regarding postings of an agenda, please?
The agenda for the October 16, 2024, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on October 10, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you for that. And next item, approval of minutes. And we are looking at, for approval, for the August 7, 2027, 2024 meetings. Do we have?
Slow move.
I'll second.
Thank you for that. Oral communications? I think this is regarding one of the items. I don't have any oral communications. Are there any board and commission member comments?
I have a...
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, October is Filipino-American History Month, and I have a quick invitation to the board and the community. We are going to have a cultural event and celebration Saturday, October 19, from 4:00 p.m. at Incarnation Church Auditorium. So we will have songs, music, dances, food sampling, name it. It's going to be fun. So be there again October 19, Saturday, from 4:00 p.m. at Incarnation Church Auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other oral communications? Thank you. With that, the next item is old business, which we don't have any, and new business. The first item is 117-121, East Fairview Avenue. That's an alley vacation case number 188B. Can we have the presentation, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Once again, this is an alley vacation request to vacate Alley 130 and incorporate portions of it to the development at 117 East Fairview. Alley 130 is a dead-end alley, and it's the first alley east of the brand and on the north side of Fairview, which abuts C3, which is to the west, and R1250 to the east. The alley is approximately 15 by 170. The requested vacation will split the alley in half between the commercial property, which is on the left, and the residential property, which is on the right. The following vacation... The following vacation will be zoned or have a general plan of commercial and residential, which will be shared on the adjacent properties to the west and the east. And the two properties will no longer be buffered by the alley and will butt one another. And for zoning compliance, the commercial property is required one tree for every 20 linear feet to effectively screen the commercial property from the residential property and also have a 5-and-a-half-foot-tall decorative masonry wall along the property line. This evening's general plan commission review is for the consistency of the alley vacation with the general plan. The general plan destinations are residential high-density for the Fairview property, which is shown in orange here, which calls for large, multiple-family dwelling developments with densities between 35 and 60 dwelling units per acre, and commercial community services, which is for services and facilities such as offices and personal services and retail, which is shown in red, which is on the left side. With the executed vacation, the total area of the residential property will have, will increase approximately 1,275 square feet and bring a total size of that property to approximately 18,260 square feet. The general plan's housing element strategy number three, which encourages developments of affordable housing through density bonus, which via this alley vacation, which will further assist the project with a 36-unit residential development, which will include three units for very low income as well as two units reserved for moderate income. And that would be through a density bonus, which was approved, the application was approved, previously approved by the director. 1,000 North Brand is designated as commercial community services, which facilitates offices and personal services and retail. The land use element economic goal number two encourages opportunity for the expansion of revenue-producing commercial establishments, which the alley vacation will incrementally increase the commercial zone property or the commercial site, which will enhance the potential development in the future for opportunities for commercially-zoned development in the future. Surrounding the alley, land uses are commercial to the south and west. To the north is St. Mark's Episcopal Church, and to the east is multifamily properties. Fairview, by the general plan circulation element, is identified as a local street, which is designed to serve residential uses such as the density bonus project, which includes 36 residential units, and is designed to carry low volumes of traffic and distribute them to collector and arterial streets such as Brand Boulevard. Last, the project will implement the goals of the city's recreation element, which in lieu fees will be collected during the development review process. And last, before I conclude, my presentation staff did receive several phone calls, mostly verifying if it butts their residence, and some of them, most of them were not. But a written comment as well as a follow-up comment by the same person was received, and their comments were printed out for the dais, which should be presented, or is printed out for you this evening. Both of these were mostly concerned about the impacts or related to a density bonus project required by state statutes and their impacts. But this evening, the planning commission's review is mostly, it should be seen in line to the general plan consistency of the alley. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, commissioners?
No.
I have one quick. I know you mentioned it, but just for clarification. So the adjacent zoning is commercial and high-density residential, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. I have one speaker card. If anyone else is here to speak regarding this item, please fill out one of the grid cards. And Mr. Rodney Khan. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Madam Chair, commissioners, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. Dennis, if you don't mind, could you put up the one, the first image you had up? Perfect.
Oh, sorry, my first image. Go ahead and tell me to flip it over.
The next one. There you go. Thank you. The subject alley is a substandard alley in width, and it is a dead-end alley in length. It doesn't go through to the street to the north, which is Dryden Street. It actually stops mid-block. This alley serves only our site, and it serves four substandard garages on the rear that will be removed for this density bonus housing project. By vacating the alley, it allows our density bonus housing project to add a few more units. And as we all know, and I say this at many hearings, our arena numbers, our regional housing needs assessment numbers. As we all know, we need housing, and we need all levels of housing. And as staff pointed out, it has market-rate housing, very-low-income affordable housing, and moderate-income affordable housing. So it checks many of the boxes. Width of the alley is 15 feet, and as staff pointed out, 7-and-a-half feet will go to the residential property. 7-and-a-half feet goes to the commercial property. Both of those properties are under the same ownership and owned by the same Glendale family. We agree with staff in terms of the proposed alley vacation and consistency with the goals and objectives of the general plan. And that was detailed in the staff report. Also, we have worked with GWP and AT&amp;T to establish easements for their infrastructure. Those are the two utilities that are currently in the alley. So we, once the alley is vacated, we've already established agreements with those utilities. So I'm going to conclude my remarks on this alley vacation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have any cards. Do we have anyone on the phone for this item?
I do not see any phone calls.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Or are you guys ready to make a motion?
Let's make a motion.
Let's do it.
Go ahead.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Chang Lee? And then, do we have a second?
Was that a motion?
I guess I was going to read, but yeah.
Oh, I apologize. In the case of a horrible hearing.
Do we have a second, Commissioner? Can we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Trockian?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Minassian?
Yes.
And Chairperson Shabazian?
Yes. Before we conclude this item, this is not related to the item, but it's just in general, I wanted to just express something that I feel like I keep seeing, and maybe it'll give a clarification to the public. And that is that the city employees are here to do their best for the city. So they bring their expertise, you know, in the planning field. They're professional planners. Engineering field, they're professional engineers. They go out there, they bring what's new, what's great, what works for our city. Then they do all the assessments. They go after funding. It's a long process that they go through to bring what's best for the city. Sometimes those changes might not be ideal for some of us. We might not like it. But that doesn't mean they have an agenda. You're just trying to show us in the city what is available and what could work for us. What I'm trying to say is be nice to them. And there is nothing, there's no, there's no hidden agendas. They don't make the decisions. The decisions are eventually made usually by the elected officials. They do what has been asked from them to bring their professional assessment and see how our city can grow better. And in the planning department, we look at our city in a 5, 10, 20, and further years and how our city will grow, basically. So looking at our general plan, our zoning map, and the way things are laid out, basically, basically shows how in the next 20 years the city will grow. It is possible that a single-family home might be in a high-density neighborhood now or in a neighborhood that might be zoned high-density. But in the future, that zone means that if the place was to be reassessed and reevaluated and built, can be a higher-density property. I just wanted to mention that because I sometimes, some comments that I, you know, I read, I feel that maybe that has been oversight. But just be nice to city employees. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, yeah.
With that, thank you. We can move to the next item, and that is item B. It's a citywide item. It's PGPA 003908-2024 and PZC 00132024. Can we have a presentation, please? Thank you.
One minute, let me get situated.
Don't worry, take your time.
Good evening, and thank you. Tonight's staff is seeking the commission's recommendation to counsel for proposed amendments to the zoning code and the downtown-specific plan relating to standards for accessory dwelling units or ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units, also known as JADUs. Just a brief overview. Zoning standards for ADUs were first established in 2017. They have since been amended several times in order to comply with state law, which is constantly changing. The most recent update we did was in 2022, and that was under ordinance 5997. The ADU standards for City of Glendale are found in Section 30.34.080 of our municipal code. And generally, state law requires cities to ministerially approve ADUs and JADUs and subject to very limited standards. In 2023, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, performed a comprehensive review of the city's ordinance. They identified 16 areas in our regulations that they claim conflict with state law. Staff has been in communication with HCD since that initial letter in 2023 regarding these areas. In June 2024, HCD issued a notice of violation to the City of Glendale. So we went to counsel, oops, we went to counsel this past August for initiation of the necessary amendments. We did commit to a timeline with HCD to have our ordinance adopted by November 2024. So we are trying our best to get this done and push it forward. Since this went to council, there was additional legislation passed, SB 1211, which I'll get into, but it adds additional provisions for ADUs and JADUs. So there are 16 topics in HCD's letter. They include dwelling unit size, where JADUs are permitted, ADUs in multifamily development, which they mentioned twice in the letter with similar comments, size limits on attached ADUs, JADUs in the development standards, accessory living quarters, street front and street-side setback requirements, JADUs in short-term rentals, JADUs in separate sales of those JADUs, unit mix, which would be number of ADUs allowed on a property, architectural compatibility, ADUs above a detached garage, parking covenant and agreement requirements, and JADUs in the owner occupancy requirement. Lot of topics, I know. When we took this to council for initiation, the four topics in this list that are underlined are what we initially sought direction on. The majority of the comments are pretty straightforward and just require clarifying amendments to our ordinance. The items on this list that are highlighted in yellow, those are the items where council asked us to bring back alternatives for their consideration. We are including those alternatives in the ordinance. It's detailed in the report, and I will go through that as we move forward tonight. So again, for the majority of those 16 items, clarifying amendments are proposed in the zoning code. Not a big deal. For those areas where the city disagrees with HCD's findings and determines that no amendments are necessary, state law, government code, Section 66326 requires the city to adopt findings explaining why our ordinance is in compliance. So we prepared a draft resolution. That's included as Exhibit 3 with the staff report, and it includes those findings for your consideration. Again, the staff report details the 16 topics from HCD's letter and the changes under SB 1211. Based on council direction, these three areas are where we're proposing alternatives. These topics were discussed at length during the council hearing, but there was not a consensus of at least four council members during the discussion for those items. And our charter requires a 4/5 vote for an amendment to the code. So these are the 10 topics where the clarifying amendments are proposed. You know, they're explained in the staff report, but if you want us to get into the details of any of them, we can. I can do it now or later in the presentation, if you'd like, if you have questions. So the proposed amendments also incorporate the changes to state law made under SB 1211. There's basically four changes. One is adding a new definition for livable space. It also expands an exception for replacement parking. Current law, you do not have to provide replacement parking if you're getting rid of a garage, carport, or covered parking area for your ADU. This has been expanded to include an uncovered parking area. One of the bigger changes, though, with SB 1211 has to do with the number of detached ADUs allowed on an existing multifamily property. Currently, you're not allowed to have more than two detached ADUs, and that's consistent with current state law when there's an existing or proposed multifamily building on the site. The new law increases the number of ADUs allowed on an existing multifamily property to no more than eight detached ADUs, so long as it doesn't exceed the number of ADUs currently there. So if you have five existing units, you get five detached ADUs. You don't get all eight.
So let's say if you have a, I think you had an example of, okay, five-unit apartment now that has two detached, I mean, two ADUs. Are they then qualified to do three more ADUs, up to five ADUs?
Yeah, they would be allowed to enact those provisions, yeah.
So you can double the units?
Essentially.
If you have a space.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, this will only apply to existing multifamily properties. When there's a proposed multifamily development, they're still allowed only two ADUs on their property. The last part of SB 1211 that kind of has to do with some of the other changes that we were proposing. They've added clarifying language that cities cannot oppose objective design standards on mandatory ADUs. So mandatory ADUs in single-family zones are limited to 800 square feet. The only standards you really can apply to those have to do with the height. The only standards you really can apply to those have to do with the height and the setback. In multifamily properties, mandatory ADUs are any ADU essentially. So our hands will be tied there. Any questions about that? As I get into the next, I'm going to go through each topic, and then we can do questions for each. I think that might be a little easier because it's a lot of information.
I just want to, again, for clarification, mandatory ADU is just any ADU? It's just that it's called mandatory ADU? What is the definition?
That's the term most cities use. It's not defined anywhere in state code, but it's essentially, it's an ADU in a single, on a single-family property, you're allowed up to 800 square feet. You can exceed floor area ratio allowed in that zone. You can exceed lot coverage. You don't have to comply with landscaping. All we can apply are the four-foot interior setback requirements and height, which ranges from 16 to 25 feet, depending on what you're doing and where you are near major transit.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so the next topic, where JADUs are permitted. So current code allows junior ADUs on properties developed with a single-family use, regardless of the zone. And this was done intentionally when we first adopted our, our ordinance because there are a lot of single-family use properties on multifamily-zoned lots. You know, R 3050 is a common example of that. We did this in order to be fair to those property owners to give them the same rights that a single-family property in a single-family zone would have. Their language in the government code restricts JADUs to single-family residential zones only, and that language is in the state law. And it's for either an existing or proposed single-family dwelling. So HCD asserts that our code is out of compliance with state law because we're restricting JADU, or we're not, we're allowing JADUs in lots outside of single-family zones. So they, they sided us for that. Let me get to the next slide. So council direction from the August 20th hearing was to provide the alternatives. There wasn't a consensus. There were two council members in favor of amending the code and the downtown-specific plan to agree with HCD that JADUs could only be allowed in single-family zones. Or, and there were three in favor of keeping the code as is and preparing the necessary findings for HCD. Amending Title 30 in the downtown-specific plan essentially requires us to amend all of the land use charts. Throughout the draft ordinances, we've kind of illustrated these alternatives with bold underline, just to make it easier to visualize everything. But we are including that. For the second alternative, which would be to disagree with HCD, the resolution details the reasons why we assert that our regulations are in compliance. I'll kind of get into it a little bit. There's no text in the state law that prohibits a local agency from allowing JADUs outside of the single-family zones. And there's nothing in state law that prohibits a city from being more permissive, which, you know, this would be. The purpose and intent of the law is to increase the supply of affordable housing within an existing single-family house, and this would allow that to happen. And they will continue to be allowed only on properties with single-family uses, which doesn't violate the language or intent of the state law. It's just outside of single-family zones. Questions? Okay, next fun topic. Accessory living quarters. So accessory living quarters includes anything within our occupancy. Guest house, pool house, rec room, those are the more common examples. The accessory living quarters are subject to all zoning requirements, including lot coverage, floor area ratio, design review, height setbacks, all of that. Our current code has restrictions on single-family properties and allows either an ADU or accessory living quarters, but not both. So if you want to do an ADU and maybe you have a guest house, you can convert that guest house, add on to it if you want, to make it bigger for an ADU. But you couldn't keep the guest house and the ADU separately. This was intended to minimize proliferation of detached accessory buildings on lots and also to encourage the conversions of existing accessory buildings. HCD claims that the city's restriction violates state law because there's no language in the law that requires an accessory, existing accessory living quarters to be converted. And so that's kind of what they're saying. We don't say this is something, that's why you're in violation. When we took this to council, again, there was no consensus. The direction was to provide alternatives. Alternative one, amend Title 30 and allow ADUs and accessory living quarters. We had two council members in favor of that, and three were in favor of keeping the code as is and not creating any findings. So amending Title 30, essentially, this would mean you'd be allowed to have an ADU and accessory living quarters on a site. Again, the accessory living quarters would still be subject to zoning requirements. They would be subject to FAR, lot coverage, setbacks, design review, all of that. That wouldn't go away for those buildings or structures. The other option, again, disagree with HCD. The findings and reasonings why are presented in the draft resolution. Essentially, you know, there's no violation because there's no language in state law that prohibits us from doing this. And so we assert that it is something we are allowed to propose. Questions?
Can you just go into the city's intent with how it's currently written? And just so we can kind of get context as to what the city's trying to accomplish? I mean, I, I think I have a gist for it, but I think it would just be helpful to present it for purposes of the conversation.
Sure. I mean, the intent with this, when it was first adopted, again, was to reduce the, reduce the amount of accessory buildings you're going to have on a lot. And that is also done to help with landscaping, open space, all of that, and preserve that on a site. We currently don't have a limit on how many accessory living quarter buildings you could have on your site. So in theory, you could have a pool house, a guest house, a rec room, and then your ADU, and then your house. And, you know, it starts not being that single-family lot anymore. That's more or less what the intent was, unless I'm missing anything. But that, that was where that came from. You know, we, we do have the, because accessory living quarters are subject to the underlying zoning standards, there will still be a mechanism in place to control that. It just gives people more options, I guess, the way to look at it then. Okay, good, all right. Okay, this is a lot on one slide, so I apologize. But the next topic is unit mix, which has to do with how many ADUs are allowed on a property. So currently, the way our code is written, if you are a single-family use, you're entitled to one ADU, and that one ADU is either a conversion of something that's there or new construction, and you get one JADU. If you're a multifamily property, you get at least two detached ADUs with SB 1211 that could go up to eight. Or you get to convert an existing, a space that's not currently being used for a dwelling unit. And for a conversion, you get at least one plus 25% of the existing number of units. So if you have a four-unit apartment building, which is fairly common in the city, you would get the one automatically, plus one, which is 25%. So you'd be entitled to two conversions. HCD is claiming that the use of the word "any" in state law means "any" and "all", meaning people get to combine these options. So under that interpretation, if you're a single-family lot, you would get two ADUs, conversion and new, and one JADU. So now you're taking this property that has one house, and you're essentially going to have four units on the site. And then if you're multifamily, again, you'd be entitled to combine the allowances, which would be at least two detached ADUs or up to eight for SB 1211, plus the conversion. So in that same example of a four-unit apartment building, once you do the math with SB 1211, you get four detached ADUs and two conversions on top of your four existing units. So that brings it, you went from four to 10. So council's direction was actually unanimous on this one. They disagree with HCD entirely and directed us to prepare the required findings, which we did. We assert we're not in violation of state law. The language in state law clearly provides distinct options for ADUs and JADUs. We do not agree that the word "any" means "any" and "all". That language specifically is missing from state law. And our city attorney's office also researched the legislative history behind this provision, which supports that, you know, the intent was never really to allow this combination. Any other, any questions about this one before I get on to the next fun topic?
Quick clarification. Is the city's opposition to clarifying in the code for a particular reason if the intent is kind of the same as what is being mandated at the state level to not combine the two of them?
Sorry, could you repeat the?
If our, if our intent is essentially to not have these combined, well, I guess my question is, what's the challenge? What's the issue with just amending to clarify that so that there's no issue with the state?
We were not amending, proposing any amendments to our code. We're saying how it's written is, is in compliance, and it would just be those findings that we have to present to them.
I, I understand that fully. I'm, I'm just saying, if they're claiming that there's an issue with how it's written, but we're technically in agreement with the end result, not combining the two, what was the rationale for not adding the added language just to clarify it? I'm just trying to understand.
Commissioner Trachian and members of the planning commission, I'm not sure.
It's on.
So the, the city's ordinance is written exactly the way states.
So state, state law is, it says, an applicant can do any of the following, and it has two distinct options that Vista went over, which is basically a conversion and a JADU, or new construction and a JADU. The city adopted its ordinance the way state law is written and has been interpreting it as "any", meaning any one, this option or that option. The state is now saying, or rather, HCD is now saying, not the legislature. The legislature adopted the law, but HCD is a separate agency that does not comprise of elected official. It's just a government-created agency. They're saying our interpretation of that law is that the city must allow both of these combinations to exist together. And what, what the council told us to do is make findings, keep our code the way it is, and interpret it the way it is, which is basically you get one or the other. So we are not proposing any changes in our code or any interpretation changes in our code.
I follow, yeah, yeah, I follow, and I'm in agreement. I think my only question is, like, what was the, why not just say "or" and just make it not an issue?
Well, that's a state, yeah, that, that is up to the state to do.
Got it, so we're using the state's language?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm, I'm good on it then.
Yes.
Thank you, and sorry for confusion.
The next topic is architectural compatibility. So currently, the way our code is written, ADUs are required to be architecturally compatible with the primary residence. And all our code says is that it must use matching or complementary building materials. The state, you know, reviewed that, and they determined that that's not objective. If a city has design requirements for ADUs, they have to be objective. They can't have anything that's subjective or vague. And, you know, council agreed with that. And so they directed us to prepare these objective design standards. Again, I want to just point out also for the viewing audience with SB 1211, we cannot apply these standards to the mandatory ADUs. These will only apply to non-mandatory ADUs. And I just, I want to point that out again. It's, it's going to kind of just be an issue, I think, moving forward. The objective design standards that we developed, they're broken up into two categories, massing and design and detailing. And just one more point, when we took this to council for direction, the intent was to focus on facades of ADUs that are directly visible from the public realm. So if it's behind the house, I can't see it from the sidewalk, it's fine, whatever you want to do. But we want to focus on preserving streetscapes and minimizing visual impacts to folks that way. They also directed us to develop standards related to second-story ADUs that are either attached to a house or, if adopted, which is one of the other topics, on top of a detached garage. Many of the standards that we came up with, it's very similar to what we did last year with SB 9 units. We took a lot of that language for that. So for massing, the standards are broken up into two categories, roof forms and pitch, and then breaks and building volume. Generally, the standards, you're going to call for roof forms to match the primary building onsite, match roof pitches, unless sometimes, you know, you might have like a Tudor house with a very steep roof that if you're going to propose that, it's going to make you exceed the height allowed. So we have some flexibility built in our code for those instances. We're also kind of moving some language that's currently in our code as it relates to rooftop deck prohibitions. That's also moving to this section, as well as restrictions on parapet heights, again, to minimize the potential for a rooftop deck. For breaks in building volume, we're requiring at least one change in plane with a minimum depth of 18 inches in order to break up the massing of these buildings. And we're also including language for second-floor overhangs. We're going to require them to be oriented towards the interior of the lot and away from adjoining properties. That kind of will help with the massing impacts that you get from the second-story additions. So the standards for design and detailing, those are broken up into five categories. Exterior and roof, exterior wall and roof cladding, entryways and doors and windows, balconies, stairs and landings, and then mechanical equipment and lighting. When it comes to cladding, generally, we're, we're calling for it to be consistent with whatever the existing primary building is. And we're requiring a minimum of two-wall cladding materials with stucco limited to 60% of the wall surface. Similar to SB 9, we're including provisions for materials to wrap corners appropriately and terminate at, at building corners. And we've also built in language for exceptions to these siding requirements when it comes to Spanish-style homes, as well as Craftsman-style homes. For windows, the standards are developed to address many of the requirements we currently have from our window replacement guidelines that we use. So the objective standards identify when windows are going to be required to be reassessed with a sill, what the minimum standards for that sill depth will be. And then we're also requiring reduced window sizes for second-floor windows in order to mitigate privacy impact. So if your second-floor window is facing your neighbor, you don't get a huge, you know, picture window. It's going to have to be something where the sill height is at least, I believe, six feet off the ground. For entryways and doors, the standards, the intent with those is really to minimize monumental entryways. So we've implemented height limitations when a covered entry is proposed. And we've also restricted the doors so that they can't be double doors. So a single door, a single door with side lights, those are typically things we approve anyways. And those are what we would allow. Then for balconies, stairs and landings, we are proposing, similar to the second-floor overhangs, that if you have these features on your ADU, they have to be oriented towards the interior of your lot and away from your neighbors. So you're not looking down into their backyard. And then for mechanical equipment and lighting, we're requiring, the mechanical equipment can't be directly facing the street. And then for lighting, we've implemented some standards to kind of just minimize light pollution. So we're identifying where light fixtures can be provided and put language in there to avoid light spill over, to provide a nuisance for neighbors. That's the end of design standards. Do we have questions? All righty, we're almost done, I promise. All right, so the next topic, ADUs above a detached garage. Current code prohibits ADUs Current code prohibits ADUs to be built on top of existing detached garages or carports. We, we did allow them for the first few years of our ordinance, but in 2020, the council amended the ordinance to prohibit this. This change really was in response to an increase in the number of complaints that our office was getting from residents, mainly because of privacy issues. That was the biggest concern. So, HCD is saying, you know, your ordinance is out of compliance because state law allows ADUs to be attached to a detached garage. And they're asserting that the use of the word attached also means above or on top So, we took this to council. Again, there was no direction aside from please provide alternatives, which we have. Three council members were in favor of omitting this prohibition, allowing the ADUs above a detached garage or carport with the objective design standards in place. And then two were in favor of keeping the code as is and not agreeing with HCD. The reasonings in the draft resolution, you know, attached does not mean on top of. And the scenarios that are in state law, we do allow. We do allow them attached to a primary residence. We do allow them detached. There's the different scenarios and we allow all of those. But the assertion that because it says attached means on top of is where we would, we would disagree with them on that. Any questions?
I have a question. It's for, it's the city attorney. Technically, this is, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but my interpretation of attached is not kind of directional. It can be attached to the top of something, to the side of something. So, I'm curious how we can assert that their, HCD is incorrect in the claim that they're making and actually defend that position legally. So, I would just want to understand that before we delve into whether it makes sense to amend and allow the ADUs or not. So, just from like a strictly legal interpretation, just curious of your thoughts.
Well, our position is mainly that HCD is not a court. And so, you know, a judge would have to make that determination. How, what judges do is they look at the legislative history behind the law, they look at the, the plain language, the intent. There's some rules of statutory construct, construction. We certainly are not saying that our interpretation, our being the city's or the city attorney's office interpretation, is necessarily going to be the one that ultimately a judge decides is the correct interpretation. But, but that, you know, but that is just our opinion. And of course, it could be challenged. The way it would be challenged would be that HCD refers the matter to the attorney general, the state attorney general, and then the state attorney general can bring a lawsuit against the city of Glendale. And at that point, the judge would delve into the statute, you know, the statutory language. And speaking of statutory language, so this is the language, just for context, the ordinance, the state statute requires a city to allow an ADU to be either attached to or located within the proposed or existing primary dwelling, including attached garages, storage areas or similar uses, or an accessory structure or detached from the proposed or existing primary dwelling and located on the same lot, et cetera. So, they're saying, you know, so that is the language. And so, if you can imagine, you know, it, it, to me personally, it does not mandate specifically that ADUs must be allowed above a detached garage. Detached garages have unique features. They are right on the property line usually. I'd say in the vast majority of the cases, there's a zero setback between the detached garage and the neighboring property. And so, that is the, the main reason. And so, our position is that if the legislature intended for this to happen, they really should go back and amend state law to make that crystal clear so that cities, you know, cannot prohibit that. But again, we presented this to city council, we, and we're presenting to planning commission with our best interpretation of the law. It is certainly up to the legislative body to disagree with that and either on a legal basis or a policy basis. So, that's.
In terms of the no setback, if there was no setback for the detached garage, wouldn't they be unable to construct on top of it given the four-foot setback requirement anyway?
They do, I believe, Vista can answer this, but I believe they do have to push back the second story four feet, but that's still.
Make it smaller.
I don't know if that's necessarily enough because of the overlooking into the backyard.
That's correct.
Yeah, I remember the, the 2020 meeting we had on, with the resident complaints on it, yeah.
I have one question.
Sure.
Just for the clarification. So, I'm a homeowner. If I come tomorrow, apply for ADU, the 2020 law still is in, in force. I can't build ADU on top of my garage or whatever. This law, it's still, because the council 322 said they're willing to go with the, so the 2020 law is still in force. I cannot build ADU on top of my garage or second story or whatever.
Correct. Our current ordinance until amended is still in effect and being implemented.
So, any homeowner, like what you said, can come in and still be allowed to build an ADU above a detached garage?
No, sorry, the 2020 ordinance changed that. You, yeah.
So, originally, what we had is we were allowing them on top of the existing garage.
Right.
And then due to some complaints, we changed the code and not allow them anymore.
Correct.
But still, I, I agree that being detached can be to the sides, you know, to the back, front, whatever, even on top. And that's attached, for my definition, you know.
Okay.
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 If I, if I can make one point of clarification. So, if we do allow them above the garages because that would be considered mandatory because it's going to be 800 square feet or less, generally they're, you know, the 400 square foot range, then we wouldn't be able to apply any kind of objective design standard. So, some of the objective design standards were built in to basically help mitigate some of the privacy issues with some of the window locations in terms of the height of the windows and that sort of thing. So, under this new law, we wouldn't be able to apply.
Any questions before we move to the next section? Okay, I think.
All right. So, we are also including additional amendments with, with, with what's before you tonight. Some of it is, you know, just miscellaneous code cleanups for typos and grammar errors. We are also amending the definitions in our ADU ordinance to include certain terms that we are in state law that we currently don't have in our code. Those include non-conforming zoning conditions, object, defines, objective standards, passageway, proposed dwelling and tandem parking. That is also in addition to the SB 1211 definitions that we have to add. The next amendment we're proposing is, it's, it would be consistent with current practice. Currently, if you are building a non-mandatory ADU up to, you know, 1,000 square feet under our ordinance, we give you a credit, this, of 800 square feet, which is the mandatory ADU. That's what you could get and not comply with floor area lot coverage, landscaping, all of that. The intent with this is to provide homeowners with more flexibility for future development because the ADU would count against them for floor area purposes when it's over 800 square feet. This just gives people more flexibility and that's kind of the intent of it. It is current practice, this would just be codifying it. We're also amending parts of the ADU ordinance to get rid of references to complying with underlying zoning standards for height and parking. That is because state law has very specific requirements for height and parking for ADUs that would trump anything that the city has in our current ordinances. And then we're also including a clarifying statement under general provisions just to assert our compliance with state law and state law requirements. So, that concludes my presentation. I know it was a lot of information, so thank you for your patience with me. We did get one comment letter, which you all received, from the Adams Hill Neighborhood That's been provided to you. If you guys have any questions about anything in that letter, we could address that. I believe one of their concerns has to do with ADUs being used for vacation rentals or short-term vacation rentals. And we have spoken to our neighborhood services division about this. It is something they're currently looking into and will be looking to enforce because we do have a prohibition currently in our ordinance about short-term rentals and ADUs. You can't do it, pretty much. Thank you. We recommend, that you recommend adoption of these amendments to council with any comments moving forward. Thank you much.
Thanks for your presentation. Any questions from staff?
Can I just ask a question for everyone, the staff and the table? So, how, how should we go about this? Should we go one by one on the 16? And are we, do we need a consensus approval on everything? Or are we giving council? Because there's plenty of differential from council on many of these. So, I'm just curious, the best way to go about it and how to present like one formal planning commission decision to them?
I think the best way to go about it would be not necessarily all 16, just because those are, some of those really are just, we need to add some language throughout the code. But I would suggest, you know, SB 1211, we have our hands tied there, but you can provide comments regarding that. But I think it's mainly the topics we've been talking about tonight is where we're, we're seeking direction. Whatever comments you provide, we will include in the staff report regarding, you know, your, your thoughts, your opinions about those. And we don't need a consensus from you guys, but this will help kind of shape the conversation at council and hopefully we can get a four-fifths vote moving forward on those items.
Thanks for that. Yes, please go ahead.
I just want to suggest, maybe we can do like an action item similar to the city council. If we agree on most of them, we pull one that we do not agree and discuss, or we can just do the, you know.
That's fine. Yeah.
I agree with everything.
Do you have a, did you want to start on that? I'm not sure if there were any other questions before we.
I just want to ask if anyone has a specific.
Yeah, I think.
Item that you want to pull out and then we can do the rest.
Yeah, I think there were a few items that even the city council was split on. I think, you know, where you were given two options. I think those are the ones that we need to discuss to give our, I guess, you know, thoughts on that.
So, where.
And the rest, we can.
Unless there, unless there is something that you guys want to talk about with the other topics, but the three where we need direction on, because there was no consensus last time, was where JADUs are permitted, accessory living quarters and the ADUs above a detached garage. If you have any comments about the other topics, including the objective design standards, if there's anything you think would be more meaningful, you know, we can incorporate that as well.
My suggestion would be, and I would be willing to move this, that with the exception of items two, six, 10, 11 and 12, which were those that were more thoroughly presented, I would be willing to move adoption of the remaining recommendations and then open back up for deliberation on those five specifically.
I second that.
I, I think before we actually do a motion, what I recommend is, I have a feeling we, we might all be in the same, same boat and we can do like a non-formal kind of consensus. I think we all agree on that and then we can.
Right. I don't think this is a motion. I think this is a recommendation.
Yeah, correct. So, I think, that's correct. You're correct. So, I think with that, sure, we can dive in and we can speak one by one. Yes, please go ahead.
So, we, we will need this as one motion for the Title 30 amendments and one motion for the general plan amendments for the DSP. You know, I will be taking notes about your guys' comments for all of these topics as we go through them and that will be presented to council as well with the recommendation.
Thank you. Sounds great.
Okay.
With that, Commissioner Fuentes, did you want to start?
No, I don't, I, I don't have anything I wanted to pull out. I'll listen to.
Commissioner B.
Are we going over some of these items that were?
Correct. We wanted to discuss the ones that are highlighted or underlined.
Yeah, I think.
If, if there are any, sorry, if there are any comments that you might have that are outside of what the, the staff's recommendation is.
No, I, I think what I'm, I guess, understanding is, is that the ones that, that still don't have the, the solid recommendation or directions, that, I think those are the ones that we'll be going over. And, you know, I think, we can go backwards. I guess we can talk about the, the ADUs above detached garage and then, you know, then go, you know, work our way backwards.
Did you have something you wanted to add? No?
I'm okay with that approach. I think it would be helpful if staff can just put up the slides for each as we discuss the five. And then I think we're, we're all in consensus on the other 11, so.
Okay. So, we want to start with ADUs above the garage?
We can start with that. And actually, as you start that, I want to kind of give my two cents on it. I feel like the hardest part of this actually is going to be for our legal team. For me, I, I read through, the matrix was very helpful, thank you for that. And they make sense. And I, I think at the end of it all is going to be the, kind of the legal team's battle, depending on how the HCD responds back. I know that we are on a time crunch on this and we need to kind of push this back out. That's my overall consensus on this. But, so technically, looking at it in a legal aspect, because I'm not an attorney, I don't have any, that's why you guys are here. I don't have a, I don't have a legal comment to give, but we can definitely discuss this and go, go through. Commissioner Trach, and we can start from you. I think you had some comments regarding the specific item.
I mean, my main comment, I, I mean, I had my vote on this in 2020, which I believe was in favor of kind of carving out the above garage. But my, I concur with the Madam Chair. It's, if from my perspective, attached just means stuck to and above is stuck to. So, I don't know how we get away with interpreting it differently. So, as a means to kind of protect liability against the city, I can understand why council would want to conform with the current code. And I think I would kind of lean in that direction. But maybe we can get into somewhat of the, the liability and what our remedies would be if the state were to kind of bring that to the city, just so we can understand the risk factors with maintaining it with our original intent. I think that would be helpful.
Certainly, planning commissioners, the, the consequence would be, at some point, HCD would refer, may, may or may not refer this to the attorney general. Depending on the decision of the attorney general, they may or may not bring a suit against the city. And at that point, the remedies would be to force the city to amend its ordinance. And I would have to get back to the commission on whether there'd be any other penalties, but I do not believe there, there are other penalties available. The, likely the, the matter would be settled before it would get to, to the point of the penalty phase being implemented. So, I would say that would be my best guess as to what the ramifications would be.
This is an open-ended question we may not have the answer for, but do we know approximately, are we talking about a large number of properties in the city with detached garages? Because since, since 2020, obviously, we've been granted arena numbers. And obviously, that's a concern in trying to meet those, to avoid penalties that would be imposed by not meeting those. So, I guess I'm curious, is there any data as to the impact that it would have negatively in terms of not being able to deliver units to accommodate those arena numbers?
I can say that there are a significant number of properties in the city of Glendale with detached garages, primarily in the single-family zones, primarily at a zero setback. I can't really speak to the arena numbers. I'm not sure if our deputy director could, but what I will say is that when we did a lot. But what I will say is that when we did allow this, it wasn't as common of a request, but we did get them. The challenge when you're building on top of these garages really is, most garages are old. And usually that means they have to rebuild that and that's an added cost. Most of those properties with detached garages in the zero setback have somewhere else on their lot, in their backyard, wherever, to put those ADUs. So there are options. It's not like, well, you can't put it on top of the garage, you don't get an ADU. There's usually other options for them, if that helps.
Yeah, and last question. The setback requirement, if it creates an ADU that's too small, obviously that would also negate them being able to build it on top of the garage as well, correct?
I mean, in theory, if you can get it to work structurally, you could build up to an 800 or 1,000 square foot ADU on top of your detached garage. Four-foot setback requirements for the new construction, I don't know that that's possible. And that's why a lot of these that we did get in were 500, 600 square feet and weren't typically that big. But they would have to meet whatever minimum size requirements are established under the Health and Safety Code for habitability.
Thank you.
I can respond a little bit to the arena stuff. So basically, when, I don't remember exactly what the formulas are, but the state had a specific formula on how many ADUs a city builds and how much you're allowed to count towards arena. We frankly built more than we could actually count. They wouldn't let us use all of those when we were going through that whole process. So I don't know that it's going to impact our arena numbers much. But when, getting back to the structural thing, if they're going to do a second story about their garage, they're going to have to rebuild the garage. It's not going to be able to support that second story. So maybe, and I don't know if we're in trouble for this, but as a compromise, maybe we require them to set the whole project back four feet rather than just four for the ADU. And then maybe that helps a little bit with the design of it and trying to maintain some form of privacy issues. But I'm not sure. It is, but yeah, but so, I, there, most of the garage, even the garage conversions, they're new buildings. They basically have to tear the whole thing down. So I don't know if we can do that or not, but maybe that's something to consider if we're going to, you know, ultimately allow second story ADUs above the garage. In the arena stuff, we build way more ADUs than the state says we do. So, I mean, it's not going to impact our arena.
Madam Chair, so, I mean, I hear what Commissioner Traction is saying. And then as far as, you know, I guess fighting the state or, you know, trying to, I guess, interpret what attached means that. But, you know, hearing from the city attorney, that doesn't seem to have a really dire effect on, you know, on the city. So I, you know, I guess, I guess it's opinion now. My opinion is to hold on to what we have now as far as, you know, not allowing the ADU on top of the garage.
I agree with you, Commissioner. I don't know if there is, if you guys want to have a discussion about this? Or does anyone have a different perspective?
Planning question members, one more additional consequence may be that HCD might, and this is just speculation, they might, after a lawsuit is brought by the Attorney General, they might ask a court to grant an injunction suspending enforcement of our ADU ordinance. Because at the moment, HCD is claiming that the city's ordinance is null and void. We are pushing back on that idea because there's no evidence to support that. There's some statutory language, but we don't believe an agency of unelected, you know, employees has the ability to nullify a city's ordinance. Only a court can do that. But it's possible that HCD could ask a judge to grant injunctions. So that'd be another consequence of a law, a potential lawsuit by the Attorney General. At that point, I imagine the city council or our office would recommend that the city council immediately amend the ordinance. You know, I can't predict what's going to happen in the future, but that would be my best guess.
Thank you for that. Any comments on that?
Commissioners, I think, I'm not opposed to either of your assertion to keep it as is. But given that it was 3-2 in council, I want to just, like, I just want to reiterate kind of my goal on this particular topic and then we can decide how to incorporate it. But I think ideally to me, the solution here is to, through an amendment, disincentivize the construction of the above detached ADU, the above detached garage ADUs and simultaneously comply outright with the state code so that we don't kind of leave it up for interpretation by HCD. Because I'm of the personal belief that it's not that hard of an assertion for them to make based on how it's currently drafted, but that's just my opinion on it.
But then how do you deal with staff having their, you know, hands tied with the, you know, some of the privacy issues and, you know, regulations of those window sizes and so on? So what I'm hearing from the staff is that, you know, if you go through that and then allow that, you know, their hands are tied as, you know, they cannot control the design aspect of that. So that's the part that kind of bothers me.
I agree that that's a problem. But my point is that if they are going to amend it, they should try and disincentivize it. So it's almost like, it's very challenging to get it constructed to begin with. And we already weren't getting many of those applications to begin with, so. And then we don't have the liability of not conforming to the code. But I don't know if it's a possible solution. I'm just kind of putting it out there.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I tend to agree with the staff's recommendation at this point that we can do the change and property owners would be allowed to construct ADUs on top of their detached garages subject to some of these requirements and that you have. And let's see where, you know, where it goes from there.
I think the staff recommendation is not, to not allow, we don't, yeah.
Well, it says if this change is implemented.
So we are going to be voting, right now, we're voting or we're discussing if you want to keep what the staff recommendation is, which is none on top. Or if you're going to allow it, the issue would be what Commissioner Lee said, that the staff will be a little-
My direction is, I wanted to see if the change can be implemented and then property owners would still meet the requirements setback and some other design criteria and-
But staff saying that they have no control or they cannot implement any type of restrictions.
Well, we have some-
We are proposing objective design standards, but with SB 1211, we cannot apply those to the mandatory ADUs, which are 800 square feet or less. And in single-family above a detached garage, that is what you will see.
Yes.
Majority. So that's where our hands become tied. At that point, we just get to apply the four-foot setback requirement, 25-foot height. And that is all we get. And that, you know, is going to be a challenge. We'll have the same problems we had in 2020.
If I could just mention, I apologize for interrupting. If I could just mention that back in August of 2024, when council adopted the motion, three council members wanted to allow ADUs above detached garages, but with strict, and their words were strict, objective design development standards to minimize privacy and/or other negative impacts. At the time, we were not aware of the language of SB 1211, which basically ties our hands. So we can no longer have, quote, "strict objective design and/or development standards to minimize privacy and/or other negative impacts." So to be fair, we don't really have the benefit of council's thoughts on what this means ultimately to their direction, which was provided in August. So because the law has changed.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe the SB 1211 was approved sometime mid-September, correct? Yes. So, yeah, and I can totally understand and imagine how that would be because those are on property lines and they would be smaller, very small ADUs, so.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to see where the city can meet the HCD's requirements and still get the benefit of having a detached garage on top.
What I, I mean, the way I see, I trust in our legal team that they'll be able to handle this in a way that would be best for the city. Again, with the laws and the regulations of SB 1211, the cities or the staff's hands are a little tight. So that law won't change. The law is in place. The law will not change, no matter what, if we allow or not allow, the staff won't be able to change that specific rule where they'll be able to do any design, specific design implementations on there. So I think what we're trying to kind of hear maybe help staff is giving a recommendation. And maybe we won't have a consensus on, you know, an answer and, you know, I think this staff will take notes on that, but I think that's where we're going. With, yes, please go ahead.
Also to clarify though, part of the conversation was that in a lot of these instances, you have an old garage and that it has to get demolished for them to build the ADU. And in that case, design standards do apply because it's a larger structure and not quote-unquote in this case. So you, it would have to go through the design process or is that, am I understanding it incorrectly?
Yeah, so the state would not, because basically the state allows you to reconstruct your garage as long as it's in the same location, same footprint. So that wouldn't be considered new construction under the ADU. The ADU would be, but not the garage.
But if the garage was reconstructed, the ADU still would not, like, we still would not have any purview over design standards on the ADU above that.
Unless the ADU is larger than 800 square feet, which is a possibility as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, have any thoughts?
Well, I've been listening. So the way I see it is like basically a lose-lose situation for the city. Because if it's a law, it's a law. We can't change, we can't challenge the law. It's just a matter of time that they're going to come and we're going to face a lawsuit. We're going to face a lot of legal challenges. It will cost taxpayers money at the end. Probably, we're going to have to change the current laws and go back to HCD. So what is the point of continuing what is a-
Can I answer that, Commissioner, my last one? So from what I understand and from what the staff has been presenting, it is, it's the interpretation of HCD. So it's not, it's the way they're reading the law. So it could be, it's not, the law isn't clear and that's why we're kind of pushing back on what we have. So they're willing, and by they meaning they're going to be submitting this answers back to HCD. And if HCD has any comments or any, you know, issues, then that's when, you know, there's going to be more communication. It could be, as our legal team said, it could be through, you know, going through to, you know, one step of the state's Attorney General. It could be a conversation with city staff where we correct that issue. I don't, from what I understand, I don't think that this is immediately going to be, oh, you guys are against, you're not following the law and there's going to be a lawsuit and the city is going to be kind of dealing with that. There's going to be all the steps in there. And again, our legal team is there to kind of read the law. They've read the law. They don't agree with HCD, which HCD did not put the law in place. And they're just giving their comments back. That's, I mean, sorry if I answered for you, the legal team. But that's, that's kind of, I feel like in a simpler way, that's what the steps would be. But if I missed anything.
Thank you, Commissioner Schabazian. That was fairly accurate. The only thing I would add is that it's not, you know, it's not, I can read you the entire passage if you want, but it's not crystal clear. It's not a, in my mind, there is room for interpretation. I don't necessarily know, sitting here, if the judge would agree or disagree with our interpretation or HCD's. But you're absolutely correct. HCD is not the legislature. They are a state agency charged with enforcing state ADU law, among other things, among other state laws related to housing. And we have even heard rumors, and I don't know if this is true, but different employees at HCD have different interpretations of the law. They do come out with an ADU handbook, which again is not the law. It's just their interpretation of the law. And I personally find the handbook very inconsistent at times with state law. So I don't know, again, a judge, a court has to decide statutory construction. It can't be decided by a state agency.
Thank you for that. And I have a feeling that City of Glendale might not be the only city. Probably other cities are going through very familiar, I mean, similar procedures. And I have a feeling that they will be similar responses to HCD. So this might actually, out of this, there might be some clarifications that might hopefully come through where the law will be a little more clear for staff to be able to interpret. I think Commissioner Lee has something to add.
Yeah, Madam Chair, piggybacking on Commissioner Traction's comment. I know you mentioned that in many cases that, you know, they had other options to build the ADU. And that was not the only option that they had to build on top of the garage. So, you know, and Commissioner Traction was mentioning, you know, if we can work. So what happens if they're only, they want to build ADU, but their only choice, they don't have any room in the backlot or anything like that, is to go on top of the garage? Is that something that we can make exception and then kind of work into this thing here?
I might be able to answer.
Just one moment, sorry.
Lisa, why you check? I'm just thinking. I think if I remember this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, for City of Glendale, 40% of the land, if it's a flat land, right? 40% of it or 30% of it is developed, yes.
You have a backyard already.
Correct. You can, you can, so if you are, if you are smaller than that, you're probably not in a single-family zone anyways. Am I correct, Lisa?
That would be correct. There would be other alternatives on your site. You know, I don't know that I've ever seen a light site where it's the lot and the house and nothing else.
Or if you have a pool.
Correct. That's a big pool.
You have an entire backyard is a pool.
Correct. I didn't think of that, but you're correct.
Just one moment.
Thank you.
Maybe, can, you know, can you have this a little bit more flexible or that you can kind of adapt to it, but have a restriction? I don't know. It doesn't seem like there's a clear answer here.
Well, I believe Commissioner Lee is correct that we, that we're obligated to provide them at least, well, in our opinion, one ADU and the other square feet. That's the mandatory ADU. Somehow, it needs to go on that site someplace somehow. So I kind of see where you're going with that. And then if it's no other options on that site, then maybe that's something we would have to consider whether our ordinance prohibited or not.
Right, because right now, at this point, they're not allowed to build. But if that's the only option, maybe, you know, that's-
Because right now, it's a flat-out restriction in our current ordinance.
One option would be to, you know, keep the language. So currently, the provision in our code says new construction ADU shall not be permitted above a detached garage or carport. And one option there would be, if we do want to allow it when there's no other options, is to pretty much just state unless it precludes development of the mandatory ADUs, which is referenced in our code. So that is something we can consider and take back to council.
I think that's a good idea. Is there, are we, can we, so I guess the issue would still be that you guys won't be able to kind of overview or like review the design aspect of it, correct?
Correct. We have no authority over the design. You know, we make suggestions, but we can't force anyone to do any of those requirements.
Would it be possible to put something in there, and I don't know if this is possible, that the size has to be 800 square feet? I don't know if that legally is okay. I don't even know if my other commissioners would agree about-
So in this scenario- So in this scenario, based off Commissioner Lee's comments, what we would do is keep the language that prohibits the ADU above the garage, but include a statement that would say, you know, unless it precludes development of the mandatory ADU, which would then be limited to the 800 square feet. But again, because it's a mandatory ADU, our hands will be tied for privacy, balconies, all of that stuff. I think that's the bigger kind of issue with, with the ADU above the garage.
And they would have to, and they would have to prove that there is no other room. Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I was just, I was actually, I wasn't sure how they would be able to, to show that. Yeah.
So the previous, the reason why the, the previous ADUs came off the top of the garage is because the majority of them face multiple properties, it's not just one. It's usually their side neighbor, their back neighbor, that sort of thing. And what we found out is a lot of the owners that are building an ADU above the garage don't necessarily want those people looking in their yard either. So all those windows and everything, all the openings always went towards the other properties. So that's why it kind of became much more of an issue. And then, these are just, these are non-discretionary projects, they're, you know, we have, they're, we have to basically prove them at some point.
Yeah.
So when these things start going up and the neighbors start calling and saying, "Why somebody building a property? I didn't see any DRB. I didn't see any kind of, you know, why do, why do I not know about this?"
Yeah.
So that's where it kind of got a little bit heated all the time. And then staff would spend countless hours going back and forth, you know, for sometimes for weeks or months, and then it would just got really difficult to have to deal with. You know, the only reason why we allowed them, I guess, at the original ordinance was to try to preserve some parking on the site. And now the parking's kind of another thing that we can't really control either. So that was the original reason why we even allowed them on top of the garage in the first place.
All right. I like what Commissioner Lee said, but I think trying to, what is, what is the word I'm looking for? How would you prove that, that there is no room on the land? I don't know how that would be. So I don't know if a study needs to be done. I don't know how that would go forward. I don't know if legal or staff has any...
It is, it is challenging because, you know, you could argue that while you can convert part of your house to an ADU, that's also an option under the ordinance. So it, it would be difficult to prove that there is no other option for you. It has come up in the past and it, it is, it is difficult to implement at staff level also. I don't know if anyone... It's, it's not easy and it could lead to other issues.
Okay.
Usually where we see the issues, they have a smaller lot than some of their neighbors or, so some of the older subdivisions, especially up in, you know, the north part of Glendale, they were just subdivided in kind of haphazard ways. So there's some lots that are pretty tiny and those, we would recognize that, you know, you might have to put it in a different location because there's no other option. So for those properties, it's, it's easy for us. It's gonna be difficult when it's just, they're, the property owner's saying, "You have to let me because it's my place," but there might be other options, they just don't want to do it. So then it gets into a, you know, just kind of a, you know, back and forth kind of thing until we come up with some kind of compromise.
Got it. I think I have a recommendation, but I have a feeling maybe we all have different ones. And I think it's okay if you don't agree. And normally, the chair goes last, but I'll go first because we have four more to talk about. I am, I personally am okay with, with going with city's staff's recommendation. I think city staff, I mean, the challenge would, if, if there is a challenge, would be on our legal team. But I think this is a good, I think it's a good recommendation. I know that some of my colleagues might have a different recommendation. Should we start from Commissioner Fuentes? And if you have any recommendation, Commissioner?
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to accept the other chains being proposed, that property owners would be able to construct ADUs on top of their detached garage, subject to, you know, some of the requirements that they have. Now, let's see. The four-foot interior setback requirement, 25-foot maximum height limit, and what other, what else they could, you know, come up with, just to make it easier for the property owner to have an ADU on top of the garage. And at the same time, we are, I would say, meeting halfway the HCD's requirement, and we're not going head-on collision and taking it into a little bit more of a battle with them. Maybe if they see that we are trying to meet them halfway, they'll ease up a little bit and, you know, not charge us with not meeting their requirements. That's where I am, yeah.
Commissioner Lee?
I, I think I said a lot. But, you know, I mean, initially, I was, you know, leaning towards, you know, you know, going with the current policy ordinance. Then, you know, if the state is gonna come, you know, come down on us, you know, if, if there is a way to kind of, I guess, suggest a hybrid solution, that's why I came up with what I suggested. So I think it's just all different opinions that is being formed here. So, so I think, you know, I, I will stick with, with that recommendation.
Thanks. Vista, did you get Commissioner Lee's recommendation?
For the ADU above the garage only being allowed if there's no other alternative?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Minasian?
Yes, I agree with the staff-proposed ordinance. So, yes.
Okay. So he's with me. Commissioner Traxian?
In all honesty, I don't think either is a great option. I, I don't think either is horrible either. It's not like this is some doomsday language. But in my opinion, I think it's probably best just to insulate from a legal standpoint, given that the above garage was not taking place that often, and then try and institute a mechanism. I don't know the answer to this because nothing we discussed was like a, a perfect solution that I can agree with. But in some, and maybe just open it up to council, that if we can somehow disincentivize the construction above, but still comply in writing with what's being mandated by the state, I think that would be the ideal approach. But unfortunately, I don't have like a detailed alternative to suggest here. And if city attorney and council determines that it's worth taking the legal risk, then so be it. So that would kind of be my two cents to include in our motion.
When you're ready, we can discuss the second item. I know you're taking notes.
Okay, so next item, objective design standards, do we want to talk about that? It wasn't really one of the contentious topics. It's just, do you have any comments?
Commissioners, any comments?
Super.
I see no comments.
Okay, so then unit mix, number of ADUs allowed.
I think this was the first item and we had a consensus with the, with city council. I think we wanted to look at the, the three highlighted and you had four underlined. That's what we were gonna look at.
Okay, so then accessory living quarters would be next. So unit mix, do you agree with the resolution findings and council's direction because it was unanimous?
Correct.
Yeah.
So accessory living quarters would be to amend the code to allow an ADU and accessory living quarters, or keep it as is, which would be, you get one or the other, more or less.
Any comments from commissioners? I mean, look at the...
So what you're saying is that you have, if you have a pool house or a guest house, then you cannot have ADU?
You can convert your pool house or guest house to an ADU and potentially expand it to be larger, but you wouldn't be able to keep it and build the ADU.
So, and you have, let's say, two-acre lot.
Say that one more time.
So let's say you have a large lot, like two acres.
Correct.
Yeah, and then, and then still, you have a, you know, so much room in your backyard and you still cannot do that under current...
Under our current code, correct. You would, you would not be eligible to have both on your property. Were we to amend the code again, that those accessory living quarters would still be subject to zoning and design review. So there is, you know, that, and that helps the two-acre lot.
Sorry, Vista, can you say that one more time? I, I don't think I...
So the accessory living quarters, you know, they're not an ADU right now, the way they're defined, they would still be subject to floor area ratio, lot coverage, landscaping, setbacks, which in single-family is six to 10 feet. And they're still subject to design review, albeit they're eligible to be exempt, and we look for, you know, compatibility with the primary residence. So we have, we have ways to kind of regulate that piece, and then you would have your ADU also. That's the kind of what we would be allowing if we amend the code. And on those larger lots that have the room for it, it, it makes sense.
And I guess my question is that the HCD is claiming that there's no language in state law with prohibition. What are we prohibiting?
So because we prohibit you from having an ADU and accessory living quarters together, yeah, they're saying, "We don't say that, so you can't say that."
Got it, okay.
So the state is saying that you could have ADU with your pool house, with your guest house?
Right, with your rec room, with your rumpus room.
Right, with your rec room.
But I think, my, my opinion, what they're concerned with is you're, you're, we're kind of enforcing someone to do a conversion when they have options to do either an attached or detached. If you, if you have an accessory living quarter, you're saying, "No, your only option is to convert." So I think that's what they have some issue with.
Yeah. I don't blame them, I have the issue. Yeah, I think I have the issue with that too. So I'm kind of leaning towards the state on this one.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. It sounds like everyone agrees with the state on this one? Okay.
Quick question. I, I don't think this resolves the language issue, but is it even possible to carve out guest house, but then the others wouldn't apply? Because I kind of, the one thing I do kind of understand from city's standpoint is like, if someone has a guest house and they're renting the guest house, it's essentially functioning as an ADU of sorts. And if they're adding another ADU to the property, they're getting the benefit of two, which, based on the allowances for single-family zones, my understanding is you could only get the one and then the JADU in some instances.
Yeah, so currently, the way our ordinance reads for accessory uses, I guess, for guest house, whatever, they're not allowed to have a kitchen. Technically, they don't meet the definition of a dwelling unit, so they cannot be rented out.
Okay.
I see, okay.
So it'd become a code violation essentially.
Okay.
Is there a consensus on this?
Commissioner?
I believe so. So are we all agreeing with the state in this regard? Yeah. I'm comfortable with that, and I'm comfortable to move that.
I am, I'm on a, on a border, board on this, but I completely understand if someone has a two-acre lot and they want to have an ADU and they want to keep their pool house, unless I'm missing something. So yeah, I think we have a consensus. Any commissioners? I think we're good. We can move to the next one.
Okay. This next one would be where JADUs are permitted. You know, the state law identifies single-family zones. We allow them on single-family use properties regardless of the zone, which is intentional. And, and they're saying, you know, we're in violation. And we're saying, you know, we're allowed to be more permissive, this is being more permissive, so we don't believe we're in violation here.
Can you give us a little bit more specifics? So it seems like our city is more liberal on this issue than the state. So can you give an example?
So there are a lot of, I'll go with our lowest-density multifamily zone, our 30-50 lots. A lot of them are built with single-family houses. A lot of them, you know, the lot may not be big enough to accommodate a second unit based off our density calculations, and an ADU is a way for them to increase their density and the, and a JADU also. And so this gives those owners more options. And that's, that's really why we do that, because we recognize that it's not like we have five or six of these properties in multifamily zones. There are, there is a good number of them throughout the city, just because we are an older city. So that's, that's where that comes from. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And I guess, I, I am a little bit, if a state is trying to promote this, you know, additional housing and all that, I, I don't know why we're, they're taking us on this. You know, I mean, just, they're kind of like contradicting their own, you know...
I think the legal team has...
If I may add a little bit of context to this, so this is another example, I believe, of HCD, you know, misinterpreting, well, perhaps not in this case, perhaps in this case, they're literally interpreting the words of the legislature, because the statute says technically, "A local agency may, by ordinance, provide for the creation of junior accessory dwelling units in single-family residential zones." So the word zones is used there. And delving into the legislative history of this particular law, when it was first adopted, it became clear to me that the legislature unfortunately didn't have a, a great understanding of using this term. They didn't use it as, as, you know, a planner would. They used it colloquially to mean, in their minds, or perhaps, you know, perhaps it was a typo, I don't know. But I believe most of them understood the intent of the law to allow single-family homes to have JADUs, not single-family zones. You know, single-family residential zones, because you can have a multifamily building and a single-family home that's legal, not conforming, and vice versa, you can have a single-family home in a multifamily zone. So our argument will be if the planning commission recommends and council ultimately decides to push back and say, "No, we are gonna allow JADUs to be built in multifamily zones that have single-family homes in them." Our reasoning will be that the intent of the state law, though perhaps not the plain language, the intent of the state law really was to allow single-family home uses to have JADUs, because it was a very low-impact and cost-effective way to increase affordable housing. That was the legislative intent. So anyway, that's a little background on why we would be pushing back on this, although technically, I believe, again, the language is there to support HCD's interpretation.
Thank you.
On, on this one, my, my opinion is I'm in agreement with staff as opposed to the state. And I think even though ideally, we would somewhat amend the language to reflect that delineation you just outlined, but I think in terms of liability or risk to the city, it's unlikely for the state to bring suit to us for promoting housing when that's kind of the state's objective. Whereas the initial conversation on the topic above garages was kind of a little muddied on that intent where they could interpret it as inhibiting housing. So on this one, I'm happy to go with the city's recommendation, unless we can somehow get the same intent by improving the legal language so that they wouldn't have the grounds to even bring anything, but I'll defer to legal on it.
Yeah, I think you have a...
Any opposition on that?
No, no.
I think we are all in agreement that we are, the, the staff recommendation would be the way to go.
Okay. Let's just go back to...
There we go.
So we've kind of hit, we talked about where JADUs are permitted, and there's a consensus on that, accessory living quarters, consensus to agree with the state. We've discussed unit mix, number of ADUs allowed, and that, there was a consensus at council and here as well. Architectural compatibility, you know, you guys are fine with the design standards we're proposing. And then ADUs above a detached garage, I believe, we discussed very much.
Yes, we did.
And I believe those are all of the topics, unless there was anything... And I believe those are all of the topics, unless there was anything else you wanted us to get into with any of these other sixteen, um-
Commissioners, any other comments? I think to make it kind of whole, we agreed with, we kind of agreed on everything. So we agree on city staff with everything. The only exception is the, um, the accessory living quarters. And then, um, that one was the one that we didn't agree with staff. And then number twelve, the ADUs above detached garage, we had a mix. Each commissioner had their own.
And we'll, we'll, we'll present that to council. And again, when this was originally brought to them, it was in the context of we'll be able to apply design standards to them. So, um, we will see how the discussion goes.
Thank you. I don't know if you need us to do, yes?
Could I make just one more comment? So based on the, the, I guess that's item two with the JADUs, I think maybe it might be good today if we add something to the language that says it doesn't preclude them from getting detached ADUs they're entitled to from being in a multifamily zone. And maybe that would help the state show that we're trying to make a proactive effort to allow for more units.
Sorry, they, um, in multifamily, you, you only get the multifamily unit allowances when you have a multifamily use on the site. That, that's written in state law.
No, but what I'm saying is, let's, so now that they have a JADU and an ADU and stuff like that, would you consider that multifamily, then that they can get the additional?
I don't. We can open that up for discussion.
I see our legal team not being happy about that.
A way to show the state that we're actually trying to promote additional housing.
I wish I, I wish I had a law degree. I'm not going to comment on that.
My concern is that, I'm just going to, and then I'll be done. So, I think what the state's concerned is if we allow a JADU and ADU, then they're done, and they can't do anything else without demoing everything and building a multifamily residential unit there. The problem with these sites is most of them can only have the one unit, because of the scale of, because under a non-affordable project, you, if you, you, we don't round up. So if you don't get to that next level, then if you don't go, it's not like you go three-point-eight and now you get four, you get three. So I think that's what they're concerned with, is it's going to preclude development of that site in the future if we allow the ADU and the junior ADU.
So what was your, sorry, what was your recommendation?
Well, I guess I got squashed on that. But I, I don't know if we can somehow find a way to still allow them to build a detached ADU, somehow make it a morphed project or something. But I guess I can't.
I think my two cents is it should try and just, we should try and broaden it, rather than narrowly define it, and with the intent that you're going for of promoting housing. But I think at the end of the day, it's the owner's decision if they want to build the maximum units. And if we're allowing the one ADU, but precluding the JADU, then we're kind of inhibiting them from what everyone else is getting. And even if they build the one ADU, they still can't do the, you know, whatever they could build if they were to do it under a different use and do multifamily, so, yeah.
No, that makes sense.
Lovely discussion today.
Uh, do we need to do a motion on this? Because it's a little interesting.
There were, just for the record, there were no calls at all this evening, so.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, your question about the motions, um-
I know there's a motion. I just-
We have two motions.
Okay.
One is for the zoning code amendments, one is for the downtown-specific plan amendments, and then we would incorporate the recommendations from this evening into those motions.
Okay. So can, should we do the downtown first? Because I think that's straightforward.
Sure.
Yes. Do we have a motion on that, commissioners?
Uh, so moved.
I think legal has a, no? Okay, can we, can we do a roll call?
Sorry, um, the motion was Commissioner Trocian, and the second was Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Trocian?
Yes.
Commissioner Manassian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
And Chairperson Shabazian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one would be for the zoning code amendments. Do I have, with the comments that we've been discussing at length.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Trocian?
Yes.
Commissioner Manassian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Subject to all the discussion that we had.
Correct.
Yes.
And then Chairperson Shabazian?
Thank you, yes.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Thank you, staff.
We have more?
Yes, Community Development Department updates.
As far as updates, and I've lost my agenda notes. I just, for the upcoming meetings for November sixth, we do have two items scheduled that evening. One is a parcel map, and one is, um, an appeal of a planning hearing officer's decision to deny a CUP and variance request for a church. So those two items will be before you that evening. Um, and then the second meeting in November on the twentieth, we have one item scheduled as of right now, and that is for the, um, Planning Commission's recommendation of objective design standards for multifamily development in multifamily zones, and then multifamily and mixed-use development in commercial zones. So that will be coming to you on the twentieth, and-
November twentieth, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, if you will be unable to make it to either of those eight meetings, if you could let us know. The item on the twentieth is a bit of a time-sensitive one, so-
I was going to say, is that the day before Thanksgiving?
Uh, Thanksgiving, I believe is the week after.
Okay.
Yeah. But that is it for Community Development Updates.
Thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.